Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, March 7th. It is 6:04 PM. This is a special meeting of the Town Council. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. President and Town Council Chambers, our council members, Mauer, Martin, Lapelis, Formakellon, Wales. First selectman has notified me that no one is here digitally. All right, is there any member of the public that would like to participate? Seeing, hearing, not closing public participation. Item four, Budget Workshop. Okay, before we begin tonight, there was a request that any reference to a specific line item or section of the budget, please just reference it by page number if you can to make everybody's life a little bit easier. Additionally, I did want to make an announcement tonight. I would ask that there is no scheduled vote on the budget this evening. What I would ask in that our anticipated vote on the budget will be during our regularly scheduled meeting on March 13th. And so what I would ask Town Council members do, if there are any additions or changes that you know between now and Thursday afternoon, to put those in writing and send those to the first selectman. I will entertain motions on Monday, even if they are not given by 12:00 PM on Thursday. I just find it to be easier for people to consider any changes over the week. All right. Okay, so we'll begin with Parks and Recreation. Come on down. And for everyone, that begins on page 179. So are there any questions at this time for Parks and Recreation Department as it relates to budget? Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, you? So my questions are kind of joint, and I'm sure I'll ask the other departments as they come in, and it's mostly about the changing of the positions and making sure that all needs for the park are met. Do you foresee any challenges that could arise out of some of these positions no longer being under the purview of Parks and Recreation and the maintenance no longer being under the purview of Parks and Recreation? And just your general thoughts on that process and where you stand on it?
Yeah, no, the services are not going to change of what my park guys currently do. For the last 10 months and even earlier than that, I've been relying on Public Works to help me with a lot of projects, and there's a lot of things that they already help us with, the heat, electric, portlets. So this just seems like a seamless transition. I will still be doing schedules and permits and things like that. Public Works is going to assist me in making sure everything gets done. So there's not going to be that much change, but it makes sense that the transfer happened.
Are there any duties that aren't currently being done by Public Works that are going to be moving over to the Public Works Department with the shifting of the position?
Well, they're going to help, you know, just making sure follow-up and gets done in their expertise. It's more than mine on some of these projects. So it's cutting the middleman out here. You know, it's just, it just makes sense. You know, the guys are already in that union. They already work, we've already done some projects together with some of the highway guys. And it just makes it a lot easier for day-to-day operations that there's one general person, you know, giving out the jobs and stuff like that.
Great. For programming, how did you, I know we still have, one of the hard parts about programming is you use part of the budget in the summer, but really the other big part of the budget hasn't come up yet for where you're going to use with the spring. How do you feel where your budget stands this year, where it's looking next year of being able to provide not only what you have been providing, but possibly increasing programming and increasing what the parks have to offer?
Like now that we've come out of COVID, or we've survived doing programming COVID because we did not stop offering services, it just gives us more opportunity. I could focus more on special events programming, more bus trips, you know, widening the range of activities for young all the way up, you know, to older people. So that kind of helps likely to be out there more, seeing what the community wants, maybe doing some focus groups, getting more sponsorships, things like that. Don't have to worry so much about the maintenance. But on that note, though, there's things that they're going to collaborate with me. So if I'm running a big soccer tournament, I got to get the schedule. I got to get the dimensions to them. So that stuff is not going to change. And that's what I currently do anyway when I sit down with the park guy. So there's still going to be collaboration. I just see bigger and better things happening, more offerings for the community.
And with those goals of offering more, do you feel like as presented, and I don't know if that line was changed or not, I'd have to double check, but as presented with the budget, do you feel like it's sufficient enough to accomplish those goals of increasing?
For this budget year, absolutely.
Okay, that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
One quick one, Ken.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. Missy, I don't know whether this is specifically for you, or maybe Ken could answer it, but 3145, which is park and rec equipment expense, all taken out.
The page you want, DeeDee?
182.
Sure.
Is that part of the stuff that was moved to Public Projects?
Some of that. So if you go to the detail page for, let's see, park and rec equipment, I believe, was all, the park and rec equipment expense, 145, that in its entirety was moved to DPW because all of that equipment was determined to be utilized by the same personnel that would be moving to Public Works.
Okay, so all of that equipment went there?
Yes.
That what you're saying?
Okay. This is my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Just a couple things, just for everyone's clarification. We received a number of communications from the first selectman here, and I would ask that those be incorporated into the minutes, into our communications on our regularly scheduled meeting on March 13th. But there are a few things, well, there's one big thing is, we received a memo from the first selectman regarding 2023 Parks and Recreation fee schedule. Now, let's see, in the memo we have is that, it's my understanding that Parks and Rec Commission voted to recommend an increase in the fee schedule, is that right?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, only to three categories, which were the day pool passes, which are highlighted on the second page of my memo. Everything else, as my memo outlines, Missy's recommendation was to keep user fees flat in the current year. She felt comfortable where it was. I don't want to speak for who you can ask her. I really do not want to further increase the fees this year. The Commission, when it was presented, then wanted to increase these. And what I really, what I was looking for, the purpose of my memo tonight is this would have a budgetary impact if the council was going to increase those fees because there is a, there would be potentially increased revenue. It's hard to predict because it's very weather dependent, but there would be increased revenue, not a tremendous amount, but it would. However, I just want to highlight that Missy's concern of keeping a balance between the memberships and the day passes, you know, I think, you know, her concern was if you get those out of balance, you're going to have a challenge with demand. And she hates to, she hates to turn away people that have memberships. It's different if someone comes looking for a day pass and we're at capacity, but turning away someone who's opted by a membership is not ideal, so.
And these increases would affect both residents and non-residents?
Correct.
Okay. And so at this point, only because it does have a budgetary impact, you are not recommending the increases?
Okay.
Just have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Missy, has it happened in the past, you know, really hot day, for example, that there's more daily membership than membership?
So the way our pool operates, we have a load capacity. It doesn't matter, unfortunately, whether you have a membership or a day pass. It's kind of first come, first served. Once we reach that capacity, we start a line. So five people leave, and five people come in. When it's a hotter day, there's people who tend to not have a pool membership that are just looking for a place to cool off. And we're one of the few communities that allows non-residents to swim. So we do see an increase of non-residents come, and it does make it, actually, some residents too, who don't have membership, decide to come swimming. It does make it difficult to accommodate everybody. And I just feel, you know, we keep increasing, and people who normally would do a day pass would then turn around and buy a membership. Because we don't have a cap on memberships, and maybe that's something we're going to have to do down the road. And, you know, we went up on some fees last year. I really felt, you know, with the economic times, that I didn't really want to go up and, you know, deter people from coming when they can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else for Parks and Rec? Mr. Mauer.
Just my understanding, this will come before council as a separate item to the budget, the fee schedule.
Well, I'm asking you, I'm looking for a consensus from council as to what your feeling is, because, I mean, if you're inclined to move this forward, I can draft a resolution for your consideration at a future meeting, but if there's not an intention to move forward, then we don't, we don't need to do that. Again, I want to bring it up now because if we're going to do this, we want to get it in the budget now, but again, it's.
In that case, I can, I can give some view on mine in that, in my opinion, we're moving in the wrong direction. I think providing more affordable services for the town, for the town and its community, for the taxpayers, is the direction to be heading. So for me, from my consensus, I would say I would follow the recommendation of our director.
Well, for the record, I support Missy's decision as well. I think user fees do have a role, but there's a balance there, and I don't think this is the year to raise user fees.
I agree.
So does anyone feel strongly that we have to consider this in a regular meeting? No, no, speak now, forever hold your peace. No? All right, so we're not voting on anything tonight?
Not a resolution.
Yeah, I'm voting on anything tonight.
I got it.
All right, well, I think you have your answer. Thank you. No other questions, Parks and Rec? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. So next, Public Works. Come on down.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, you know, one of the memos on the diocese also relates to the proposed departmental reorganizations and kind of speaks for itself, but just want everyone to know that it's there. And along with that are drafts of changes to job descriptions because those were requested by Mr. Mauer, so I wanted to make sure that you all had them. Again, they're drafts, they would be presented for council's consideration at a future meeting to adopt any changes, but just so you have them.
All right. So and then for anyone who would like to know, this is 148 of your budget packet. Questions for Public Works? Mr. Mauer.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. So you heard me talk a little bit about the combining positions. I guess for you, it's almost the opposite end of that question of, do you have any worries about this creating an over, an influx of too much work for the department to be able to handle even with the positions drifting around and everything? Is there any worry that there would be an overburden on the Public Works Department in getting all of the Parks and Rec work done as well as, but had been under the purview of Public Works?
No, I don't foresee any conflict in that aspect. We still have the Highway Department performing their functions, Recreation, if you will, will be performing their functions. It will be the sole general foreman overseeing the direction of all of those. And as Missy stated, it's a collaboration, the working movement and mechanism that we're going to be going through in this first year. We've already been talking, as you said, for months now. Also, my deputy's done a fantastic job to assist and work through the process of, you know, putting up a schedule, understanding what's in front of us, and this type of face-to-face discussions, all the activities within the park and whatever changes is done.
Okay. With the new general foreman position and then the elimination of the Highway Supervisor and Park Maintenance Supervisor, the general foreman basically taking over both of those jobs? Or is some of that job getting split out into Director of Public Works, Deputy Director of Public Works as well?
Well, there'll be oversight up on our end as well. Obviously, throughout everything, we're the face to speak to issues and concerns and have to effectively come through and manage through it, issues, items, conflicts. The general foreman's position would be just that, supervising the Highway Department. We already have a two-tier, in the Highway Union, crew leader position. So we have oversight that's currently in place, as well as within the park staff. They know their job. They know the things that they need to do. We're not changing anything in how they operate, so their schedule's going to remain the same. We'll work through that and expect it for some issues.
So basically, we foresee the general foreman basically taking over both the Highway Supervisor and Park Maintenance Supervisor position. Is there any worry that, being that the salary of the general foreman is less than what the Highway Supervisor was alone, that we won't be able to find somebody to take over that position who will be able to do both jobs?
No, I don't foresee it being an issue. There was a lot of discussion prior to, we were looking at previous salary was for a gentleman, number 17, he had built up a lot of his seniority. And obviously, we have multiple tiers of supervisors ourselves, myself, the deputy, if things need to move down because there's a situation that that's our construct, that's part of our org chart, so we can assist as we need to moving forward should there be a rise in issue for Highway.
And can you just go into a little bit about what the additional responsibilities with this shift for the director and the deputy director positions will be?
So from a budgetary standpoint, we're going to be overseeing all purchases, all the financials, all the budget build. Some things we do provide to other departments as well. There's that budgeting end, but then we also have to administer and manage the staff. As we go through predominantly, the front end's going to be my deputy. He's going to be overseeing, he's going to be working diligently as the general foreman as we take over the maintenance, obviously, throughout the parks staff and parks grounds. That's, that needs to be a collaborative effort in order to kind of get our arms around that and understand what it is we're doing, understand the timing, you know, that learning curve, if you will. So there's going to be a significant increase for everybody involved.
Perfect. So that's for that kind of questioning. The other thing is the thing I ask you every year, roads. We did actually take, increase a little bit about of the amount that we were looking for and the amount that we're looking to do this year compared to other years. Do you feel like we're at capacity, this is what we can do at the best price per mile of road cost to mile ratio? Or do you feel like we could do more and it would benefit us in the long run because of price at now versus where they might be next year, the year after that? Where do you feel like we are on that scale?
So currently, right now, one of our biggest hiccups is the fact of the supply chain. That's one thing that's significantly impacted us moving forward. Money-wise, we're in very good shape. It's a comfortable position that ties into the bonding efforts that finance feels is appropriate for the town. We clearly would always never say go to more money, but when you look at what we have and what we have to do, we are looking at our own in-house staff, we're looking at some contractor items as well, just because of the impacts we had through supply chains. So it's a significant amount of money, and not a lot of communities actually would put forth this kind of money. So I'm glad to have been in a better position now than where I was when I first started, $500,000 a year, combined with grants as well. So I think we're in good shape, we're making good ground, and I appreciate you.
And then there was just one question from Councilmember Katuska, who had sent one question for Public Works. Looking at page 153. Where is it, 152? Yeah, it's 152. The Public Works Salary Highway Maintenance Other, the 17.76% increase. I think, let me take a look at what she said. She was just looking for a little bit of a breakdown of what that salary increase was.
So that is 150003 on your highway, on 152.
So that breakdown, when you look, that increase is with additional, that's park staff moving over and the container one position. If you go to page 154.
Yep, I've got it.
So that, that gives you the literal breakdown of all the increases and notes applicable?
That accounts for that full 17.76, then?
Correct.
Perfect. That was the only question I had from her for you.
Anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Chris, not necessarily this year, but looking forward with this realignment of duties and stuff, would you anticipate that you will need additional staff? I mean, do you need this year to figure out whether everybody can get it done?
We've actually, literally, two hours ago, we're kind of, you know, high leveling that conversation. It's a, it's a learning year, you know? Clearly, we have to justify the needs. So as we work through this year collectively, we'll be able to better answer that question. Right now, we feel it's appropriate, or else we would have made an adjustment to say it's something was glaring at this point. But right now, you know, we're going to be doing this as a teamwork effort, so we'll be able to comfortably work our way through it. And I don't foresee anything being an issue moving forward from this point. We'll be able to better evaluate that after we get some feet under the path we're going, you know?
Okay, thank you.
As Missy mentioned earlier, we've been kind of running for several months with vacant positions, so kind of by default, running this model to a certain degree, actually without the general foreman, with people acting in certain capacities. So I think that gave me the comfort level that we can certainly move forward as intended for at least the next fiscal year for I actually implemented a little earlier, but yeah.
Anything else, Councilmember Martin?
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one quick thing?
Okay.
I wanted to just make a note, really more for the record, at the last year's budget shops, there was a question about garbage collection and the concept of, you know, kind of the cost-benefit analysis of if the town were to provide that as a service as opposed to having residents do it currently doing it. Mr. Noackey did run some research and analysis on that. I just wanted to report back that costs, when you add up the costs that the town would have to undertake for collection, which would be, you know, similar to what we do right now for recycling, right? So there would be that cost, as well as then the cost for disposal, which you then bear as well, those add up to over, estimate over $3.2 million. So, you know, that's, you know, that would, if we were to absorb that in this current budget, you'd be looking at like a 6.9% increase in the mill rate. So, and if you, if you, Chris also kind of, you know, back that into what kind of a monthly cost per household would be, and it's around $38, $39 a person. And that's kind of around where most people's collection rate is right now, at the high end, if you're getting it every week. If you're someone who likes to just go to the dump when you like, you're paying maybe less than that, right? Because that's only $7 a trip. Or if you're doing every other week, or I know there's senior rates that some of the collection agencies offer, some of the, so those are less. So with that whole analysis, I really didn't think it was, you know, it wasn't something I included in this budget. I also felt like it would also stifle local business as well, so I thought, you know, everything being equal, I didn't include it in this budget, so.
I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
Nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Rick, come on down. Planning and zoning, page 97. All right. Questions for Mr. Schultz? Mr. Mauer.
One second, one second, got to get. Hello. Another budget year, here we are.
Fourth one.
That's it. So similar to the asked two departments, most of my question has to do with the restructuring of the positions here, their salaries for those positions. It struck me a little bit more on this one because the positions are so new to be making such a big change in the department after just adding the town planner position, just adding the Director of Economic Development position. I guess with the, my biggest question is, with the eliminating of the town planner position that we just created, are all of the duties that are currently done by that position going to be able to get done by this planning and zoning administrator, which was a position we already had, and then we added a town planner and added a Director of Economic Community Development because it was too much for that one position?
A simple answer is yes. It can be done, it will be done. If I can step back, I've been now employed for four years and three months. That chapter has been fulfilled. I think we all realize where we're at now and what we have achieved. I feel very good with where we're at. I do a lot of night meetings, as you know, but it's a delight. The relationships with the land use sports is at a level I've never had before, and I am entering my 44th year. So I say that with experience. So we're ending the chapter that I started with four years, three months ago, and taking it to the new chapter. There are a lot of new, exciting things, especially with the online permitting, and I can't emphasize that. And with that element that we have, this organizational chart fulfills that. It's been modeled after towns that I respect personally and professionally, and I know that it. And I know that it's.
So the, at least as of right now, there's no future that you foresee where two years down the line, we're going to be coming back in and adding the town planner position back to, and then suddenly going from a decrease to an increase because we've added these other positions and then creating a new town planner position. That's not something that you foresee?
Not at all. As a matter of fact, I had a dual title when I was in North Bradford. It was town planner slash planning and zoning. It's really synonymous in my profession. But the, uh, the job description has been given a lot of thought and been scrutinized as it should be, and I feel comfortable with it.
And then I, I guess the next question is almost a conflict of interest for you in that the salary of the town planner was, I think, 95. The salary of the director of the PNC administrator was 81, eight or something like that. And now it's settling at 90. So it's actually a decrease from just the town planner position. Can you go into one, kind of the rationale of why this position that's overtaking two positions is actually less than what one of the positions alone was? And two, whether that, uh, well, it's, well, I, I think you've done a great job and nobody stays in one position forever. Is this a position in a salary level that will continue to be able to attract somebody qualified to continue that past your time with us?
I think so. You have to, uh, remember the town planners position when I first came here, four years, three months ago, I oversaw nine positions. Consolidations happened, uh, retirements, et cetera. But it was based on, uh, the supervisory level. That was high. So the, the, the planning and zoning administrator's position is, is, is rightly written and salaried accordingly.
Great. Um, and then my next question, and we, we did just get these, so I've, I've, I've started to review the, basically the economic and development director. Can you kind of go into what the new additional responsibilities will be of that position that didn't exist prior to, uh, this budget cycle?
Which one, Jason?
Uh, for the director of economic and, uh, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, director of economic.
Director of economic and community development.
Do you want to talk to Rick about that, or do you want to talk to Bill Holsworth about, or do you want to do both?
Probably both, cause it's all under, no, it is its own department head.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Never mind, you don't need to answer that question. It's just all in the same slide.
I think my memo was, I had a lot of, addressed a lot of the questions that you're asking. I mean, the, when the town planner position was, uh, first brought back, it was in fiscal year 19, so it was five years ago. Uh, there, you know, that was not brought on as a traditional town planner role that other communities might have. It had, um, oversight of a lot of different, a lot of other departments. Um, it, it took away a lot of the functions that were being done by the town engineer at the time in kind of overseeing this loosely, uh, loosely collected land use group at the time. Uh, and as Rick alluded to, we've made a lot of transitions. Engineering has become a function within Public Works. And Wetlands has been rolling into planning and zoning and very effectively consolidated there. So, um, the, the technical aspects of, of the town planner role, um, for planning, uh, still in the, uh, deep planning and zoning administrator role as it was back before the town planner role in. So it is compensated higher than the current PNC administrator, but not to the same level as the town planner, which had other departmental responsibilities, which are shifting to the director of community and economic development.
Yeah. Um, and I, I, like I said, I, we, we, we just got this stuff.
Right.
Tonight, so I've kind of been, as we've been talking, working through it, but that all makes sense to me. Um, I, I appreciate the, you coming in and appreciate the, the service in the one position and look forward to seeing what you do in the next position.
Okay. Any other question?
I have just one.
Councilmember Martin?
Um, Rick, with the, not counting the changes that are proposed here, are there, do you personally admit any staffing issues within your department as it currently stands or going into the future?
No, as, as it exists right now, uh, it's, uh, meets the, the needs of the community as a, as a whole. Uh, the only thing that's difficult and everyone realizes in all professions is the upcoming replacement people. And I've taken the liberty of checking with public universities and colleges and, uh, everyone's coming elsewhere. It's, uh, you know, with the night meetings and so forth, uh, it's, uh, it's a challenge. But currently, to answer your question, it's meeting the needs of the community and, uh, the, the different boards and commission relies on the staffing and we do provide the assistance to them. Everything's been, uh, running smoothly.
So could I extrapolate from that, that perhaps going forward, you see there might be some more difficulty in staffing because of salary or interest and/or?
Yeah. Well, staffing is and will in foreseeable future going to be an issue. Uh, for instance, my wife lost her entire support staff to retirement and moving to other jobs with higher compensation, and that's in the private sector. So it's a real issue, but currently we have all our positions filled and we're, we're, we're doing well.
Okay.
I think the challenge is more around positions that require specific credentials. Um, is really what Rick is kind of getting at, and we've dealt with it in, you know, the building department, the health department, planning and zoning. I mean, you know, there's just less people in the workforce than there were, you know, a few years back that have those credentials. So that, you know, the recruitment time period becomes longer, but we've been very successful. We've got great new people on board and, uh, it's working well. But I think, you know, Rick's point, you know, when it comes time, when it is time to replace people, we, there's a, there's a smaller pool of candidates typically.
Right. Interesting.
But that's a challenge for every.
That's a challenge for every community, I can tell you. Um, I'm, I was gonna, looking at Amy for a second, I mean, every health department in, in the state is like, you know, we're, everyone's poaching everybody else all over the place. It's, it's just been an ongoing challenge. But Amy's credit, we've, we've already brought on, uh, two new, uh, folks, so, and got a third position on the way, so.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Anything else from Mr. Schultz?
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It's Holsworth, uh, page 71.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mallor.
You haven't even raised my hand yet. That's it. How's it going?
Excellent. And yourself?
Doing well.
Good.
You kind of heard what, uh, basically what the line of questioning here is, just with these departmental shifts, making sure that we feel that staffing wise, we're okay. We make, we, we feel that the transitions aren't going to create any holes that, uh, exist. And then also just because these positions were also new, that, uh, just a little bit of the rationale, uh, of these, of these shifts. Like, uh, the segment said, he did give us a memo tonight that has some of that information, but hearing it from the department heads and your thought process behind it would be helpful as well.
Okay. So, uh, looking at some of the best practices in the industry as identified by Advanced C T, uh, CEDIS as well, you know, having a common point of contact for businesses, for developers, um, to reach out to, to understand what the process is for moving into town, being able to cover at a very high level what's planning and zoning, what's in, what's in, what's building, but still relying on the experts, the people that are actually running the teams, the chief building official to run the building department, the planning and zoning administrator run the planning and zoning department, you know, relying on their expertise. Economic development does not sign off on permits. Uh, we have no desire to sign off on permits. I'm not looking to sign off on permits. It's merely keeping my finger on the pulse, seeing how I can help those developers, those residents and those businesses navigate our permitting process, make it quicker, make it more efficient and make it smoother. So those businesses come into town and open up on an expedited basis.
Uh, that, that actually leads perfectly into the next line of questioning, which was, uh, with the permitting process and the way that economic development works hand in hand with the building department, with, uh, planning, zoning. Are there any shifts, any changes within, uh, those processes that we, that you think we, we need to see happening or that are in the works that you, that, uh, will make it easier for businesses, uh, to thrive in Monroe and easier for residents to get, uh, what their, the services they need and the permits they need in, within Monroe?
So there's two answers to that question. The first answer that I will provide is that, uh, you know, I've been working very closely with Rick Schultz in his capacity as town planner to adjust some of the planning and zoning regulations to make it easier on businesses, to help them be able to achieve what they're trying to do, but still have the town have their regulations in place. That's the first piece. The second piece is we've been working over the last two years to build an online permitting process with the help of MetroCog and AIS, uh, and we have launched that for our mechanical permits. To date, we have issued, I think, around 400 different mechanical permits, uh, through that system, and we're very close to having an online building permit, uh, available as well. So with those types of, those types of things that will be available for the masses, I think it'll make all of our processes more efficient.
Excellent. And finally, when it comes to this year plan, five-year plan for economic development, can you kind of go into your thought process there and also whether you think the current budget is sufficient to accomplish those goals?
Um, so my five-year plan is to find businesses that will occupy the existing spaces that are vacant at the moment. Also, uh, developers that will develop on open land that will come with tenants, that will help improve the size of our grant list and help offset some of that, some of that tax. Um, I believe that the current budget as outlined, uh, is sufficient for this year. Um, over the next five years, we will review it on an annual basis and make adjustments at that point, but I do believe that the budget at this point is, is ideal for what we're looking to accomplish in the next fiscal year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Mallor?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Martin?
Real quickly, um, in the, um, marketing and development, uh, 10, four from, down from 11. What exactly is that number used for?
I'm sorry, can you help me?
Yeah, a little line.
Page number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page 74.
Marketing and development?
Right.
That's 150550.
150550.
I printed this off in the most microscopic font.
It's the, um, it's the third one under expenditures.
It is, and down at the bottom, there's a list of expenditures.
It's on 74.
74.
Thank you, Heidi. I can't even, I can't even read this font. I don't know why I printed. I apologize.
Sorry. I can barely see it up there. I can read it well, but.
Question as to the reduction? Heidi, can you hold this for me?
My question is, how much of that money's been spent?
For, uh, community outreach, marketing and media promotion? Is that the number that you're on?
Yes. Uh, 50550 again?
First line item.
First line item.
The entire line or a component of that?
Um, it's got the entire line.
I don't have a recent number from.
I'll, I can look it up real quick.
So I know that, that, um.
It was a slight reduction because you had, you're, you're anticipating printing some of those materials in the current fiscal year and they'll have a lifespan of greater than a year, right?
Correct. And some of them are also incorporated into the community events line, like restaurant, some of the advertisements that we're doing for restaurant week, the flyers, the QR codes, the mailers, the table tents. Those kinds of things would be incorporated under the community events for restaurant week or the spring event and taken out of that marketing line item. That marketing line item is specific to, to, uh, building an EDC brochure that would, uh, attract businesses, that highlight the benefits of being in Monroe, that bring businesses into town and make businesses want to come into town.
When you do the, um, broker and development meetings.
Yep.
Do you have any way to gauge the success of those? That, you know, the money that the town puts out to take a bus and show people around or whatever? I mean.
We've only done that a couple of times. We don't do that every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have not done that since I have been here. We do hold a luncheon at Woody Farms. We highlight all of the properties that we have available. We try and build relationships with those commercial brokers that have relationships with other developers or large commercial names. Um, Walbombs, Grand Union, I know they're both out of business, but places like that, those big, I don't want to mention the, uh, the other grocer, but, uh, you know, so those brokers that hold those relationships, if you can build a relationship with those brokers and they can go back to their clients and recommend that they look at Monroe.
Right. I, I understand what, what the intent is, but do we have any way to gauge what the outcome of that is?
I do, I do not have any KPIs that I can share with the commission this evening, no.
I, I think it would be very difficult to tie development directly to one meeting.
Well.
However, I could tell you that, you know, cause I attend, I attend that meeting and, you know, a few years back, I was discussing what I thought the challenges of our town were in growing business and, and, and what, you know, what changes we were looking to make in the future. And as I've gone to subsequent meetings, um, and been able to talk about the changes that we have made to structure, to process, to regulations, um, the room is extremely energized and to the point where we, I, we have had on more than one occasion, a, a commercial Realtor stand up and say, what he's saying is true. It is, Monroe is easier to do business today than it was X years ago. And they're just, they're excited and they're encouraged and that, you know, that kind of, you know, to be in that room and have all those people hear that at once, in my mind is, you know, it's extremely valuable. And, um, listen, I mean, we have, we have developers in town that had not been prior. You know, I, can I tie it to a particular meeting? No, but there are.
I, I wasn't necessarily referring to one meeting.
No, I, I know. I'm, I'm just trying to say, I can't, I can't say like, but for that meeting, development wouldn't have happened, but I can tell you all, all the total, I mean, there are developers that are building in Monroe that, you know, that quite frankly would never, they said they didn't want to be doing a business in Monroe prior. So, um.
We probably all heard that through the years.
Sorry?
I said, I think we probably all heard that through the years.
I used to put people on a school bus and ride to all different areas servicing Monroe.
It's a reputation that the town has had. And, uh, as of late, that reputation seems to have diminished quite a bit, and it's really a reflection on the team that we have in place.
Great.
But I can share that a lot of the changes that we've made within the planning and zoning regulations, the new district, new districts that have been created, I'll point to Stevenson Business District, that is almost fully occupied and growing. Uh, each week we have conversations about what other businesses might be moving into that, to that location. Uh, we've expanded other districts with the, um, the mixed use. We have our first application in for mixed use on the town line. We have the Main Street Design District, which other businesses are taking advantage of, that kind of, uh, softens some of the other regulations. If the business has a great idea, you know, they're free to come to the table with that idea and present it to the planning and zoning commission. So things like that are, are hugely beneficial for the town to attract new, new business and new blood.
Um, could, do you sit, I know you don't sit on the economic development commission, but do you attend their meetings? Do you run their meetings?
I attend the meetings every, uh, every month. Second Thursday of every month, six o'clock to the South Wing table. I have one this Thursday night.
All right, have fun.
It's a what table?
Anything else, Council?
South Wing, the old, formerly known as the Annex.
The Annex, okay.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Holsworth?
South Wing.
Hearing none, seeing none, have a good night, Bill.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Keith.
Thank you.
All right, Health Department. A new face.
That's fancy, doesn't it?
All right, who's got questions for the?
Page three on 162.
I'm a jacket neck. I'm not good at presenting.
Also, one thought that I couldn't reach, but thank you.
All right. Mauer, was this a request by you?
Yes, leave me one second.
What's the page?
162. Right, I know what the question is. Hello, welcome, first budget process with us, so I hope it's not too bad. I, I only had one lineup, line item that I had a question of, which is on page 164, and it has to do with the health salary for part-time, and unfortunately, I don't know necessarily, because you are so new, whether you know the trends, so might be a combination for you and this last man, but it, that's one of the items that we do tend to come in well under budget, year after year. As you can see, the, the total in 2122 was only, was under 3,000, right now, we're over halfway through the year, only at 5,000 out of a budgeted 20,000. Do we think we still need that 20,000 up there, and if so, can you kind of just talk to that a little bit?
Sure, so the reason I think that it hasn't been meeting that 20,000 that's been allocated is because the position hadn't been filled, so that position is really the part-time public health nurse, and I believe the long-term public health nurse had retired during the 2122 fiscal year, and that there was some struggle to find a replacement. I had to fill that position, I think about a month ago?
Sounds right.
With a public health nurse from the town of Stratford who just retired, and was looking to still stay kind of with her fingers in it, and be active, and have something to do. And so, I think we'll be able to actually use that entire line for her salary now that she's on board, and be able to offer some programming that we had offered prior, before COVID.
And now, based on that answer, in that case, that with this position filled, do you foresee that as enough for that position, or do you have any fear that with that person here on a regular basis, and filling that position, that we might go over that number?
We won't go over that number, but I, you know, I'd like to take the year to kind of take a look and see what the needs of the community are, and kind of assess where everything is, and then come back to the next budget year, to see if whether or not, you know, that 20,000 in her hours per week is meeting with the needs of the community.
Makes sense to me, thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Mauer?
Just add a little bit to that, pre-COVID, when the former position was there before Amy's time, you know, not only we, we utilized this line, and actually, we actually.
Third one down.
I'm just trying to answer your question. That's okay, and.
Sorry, ask me.
We, we utilized the full line, and actually, individual earned more because there was grant projects that were not part of the operating budget, so they would get additional hours through those grants, which is still contemplated in the fiscal year 24 budget, so there is an opportunity to get more hours for that person. The other reason, in addition to the position being vacant, and this being one of those positions that has become very difficult to fill, is in the last couple of years, most, if, you know, the vast majority of nursing services that we've utilized have been covered by COVID grants, which is why the actuals are showing as low as they are. But we have, we have definitely used a lot of nursing in the past, it just hasn't been the way it traditionally was used, because it was all being directed towards COVID response.
With the, that's actually, makes a lot of sense, and the COVID grant aspect was not something I had considered. Do you know, do, in the upcoming fiscal year, do we have any anticipation of any of those grants being able to, I know you mentioned other grants being able to, but those specific grants, do you foresee anything coming?
We do have one that was actually on your prior council meeting, the ELC 2, and there are, are that, for that.
Great.
That goes through, I forgot, what is it?
24.
24, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Councilmember Martin.
Staying on page 164, on 153065, I agree with him that the print is really getting smaller and smaller. Health consultant fees, what exactly does that encompass?
Sure, so the 3,200 was a triannual, I think is the right word, but every three years, we pay the Health Improvement Alliance out of Greater Bridgeport area to do a community health needs assessment, that's done throughout the region, and so every three years, we pay for that service.
So, we're not paying for it this year?
Nope, we paid for our.
Off-year?
It's off-year, yep.
Okay, great, thank you, wondered why it was zero.
Anything else, Councilmember Martin?
No.
Anything else from Health? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
All right, and I believe there were a few questions for Human Resources that Councilmember Mauer provided as the first electman, is that right?
I did, those have all been answered, most of them had to do with getting this packet of the various job description changes, since we were considering those within the budget, I felt it be prudent that we knew what those changes, even though they're not definitive yet, but at least what the approximate proposed changes were, so thank you very much for providing those. And then the other one had to do with insurance rates, which the first electman entered, and just had to do with where, where our estimates were, and so that was explained as to the estimates of, for insurance, so.
Thank you.
And just for the benefit of the rest of council, our, our current guidance is that where we are currently budgeted, which is the cap that we previously negotiated, is, is probably a good assumption at this point, so we don't have a final, we don't have a final proposal yet.
Before we do go on, Mr. Chair, if I could ask one.
Human Resources, or?
It's really a question for the first electman from Councilmember Katuska.
Which department?
I think it's more of a general budget question.
Yeah, go on.
Thank you. I think you somewhat addressed this in one of your memos that you gave to us with regards to fuel, her specific question was with regards to vehicle fuel, whether or not we felt that the current estimates in the budget for vehicle fuel might be high, as we're starting to see a decrease, or where you, where you felt those stood before we started voting on line items.
Sure, so I can actually, I can just address this, the last memo that I put on the dais for you, so as I, as I had mentioned during my budget presentation, we, there were certain things that we were not fully resolved at that point in time, so fuels was one of those issues, and we had been, while we, going through the budget process, we, we tried to budget based on where, where things were at that time, but knowing we hadn't been locked in, we were endeavoring to lock in and leverage the buying power of joining forces of other municipalities, which is what we did. So, we have actually very good news, we have a reduction in fuel costs, gasoline is a slight decrease, it goes from a 16% increase to a 12% increase across the board. Diesel and heating oil came down significantly, we are at, you know, nearly 50% increases for both of those, and we've locked in at a 19% increase on diesel, and a 17% increase on heating oil. So, obviously, everything is still going up, but it's not going up as much. So, in your memo, I have put forth, with the help of, you know, Mr. Nowacki and Heidi, the analysis by line item impacted, some of them are pretty small, but some of them, when you talk about a fleet like the Police Department or Public Works, it's significant. So, in total, across the board, there would be a reduction of $89,414 that I am recommending that the council move to make these adjustments in their proposed budget, or in your proposed budget. And I'll just keep going, not related to fuels, but a second item that I mentioned during my presentation that was not resolved, but we did get word the week following, is that Aquarian provided their updates to our fire service charges, that's in the, the water distribution system, actually known as hydrants, and the infrastructure that feeds them. That actually is a increase from what we had originally projected of $11,194, based upon the analysis from Public Works and Finance on Aquarian's notice. If you net both of those out, by incorporating all of these recommended changes, the projected increase to the mill rate would go down from 2.58% to 2.48%.
Thank you. At this point, there may be some motions on, on Monday possibly, but I would ask that the, our Finance Department and first electman prepare a number for the council to vote on that incorporates those changes.
Okay.
As for any other changes, we'll cross that bridge if it comes, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer.
Can I ask further that a resolution be drafted to specifically change those line items? I, I believe, if I'm correct, we could do that as a single resolution.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's the thing, that's, okay. All right, there's nothing else. I'm going to close this meeting, adjourn this meeting at 7:06 PM.